Okay. Call a regular meeting to order. We welcome you here this evening. We want you to know that tonight, we actually have our two new board members, that this will be their first official board meeting tonight, and that's Ms. Joanne Scorola and Mr. Greeley Mitchell. And of course, the incumbents that were returning are still up here, but did want you to know that this is an important night because this is a first for them with a heavy agenda. We have with us this evening Pastor Ellen McCubbin from Hope Mills United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed then by our pledge of allegiance. If you all will, please rise.
Let us pray. Holy God, we give you thanks for another day in which you have renewed our posterity. We give you thanks for getting us through a tumultuous year. We give you thanks for health and harmony in our community. Lord, we ask you tonight to guide all the decisions and the discussions, to be in the plans, to be in the executions, to make our town even better and better. And Lord, we pray for the future of our town. We give thanks for a world where, for our country and the town where we can elect our officials and be a part of the decision-making. So we pray, Lord, that you will guide us now and in the future, keep us safe, watch over our town, and help us to continue to be one of the best places to live in this state. We give you thanks, oh God, and we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. And I ask tonight if you will keep Karen Brady, who is the secretary of our pastors' coalition. Her son passed away, and his services will be Wednesday at Hope Mills United Methodist Church. So he's a young man. Ms. McCubbin, what how old was Evan?
I don't know. He was 130.
Okay, but he's a young man. So if you will keep her in your prayers and the family for this event on Wednesday, that's going to be very hard this time of year. Thank you, Ms. McCubbin. Is there anything that you would like to remove or add to our agenda this evening? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda which is before you?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, at this time, we have official comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Marley. Is there anything from you this evening?
No, ma'am, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and that's about it.
Okay.
Glad to be here.
All right. Commissioner Scorola?
It's great to be here. I'm ready to get to work, and everyone have a Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I'd just like to thank the Parents Committee for the holiday ornaments that they gave us, and also I'd like to thank and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as well.
Commissioner Legg?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who came out this evening. I ask that you pray for our veterans, our firefighters, and our police officers, that they stay safe over the holiday weekend. Bless our staff, and thank you, God, for sending us such a great staff. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I also like to thank everyone for being here tonight and wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a very blessed and prosperous New Year.
Just want to thank again our veterans associations here in Hope Mills, Post 10, 630, and Post 670. We were participants in Reach Across America on Saturday, and we had two cemeteries that Mr. Morris was, he coordinated this event, and we had two cemeteries that we actually, while Fayetteville was doing the one at Sand Hills, we were doing the two here in Hope Mills. So it was a good event for us, recognizing those veterans because we do have quite a large number of veterans that are buried in our cemeteries here in Hope Mills. So I want to thank Mr. Mitchell for your input on that, but especially the fact that it was very successful, and Jim Morris was the contact for that. And again, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We're looking forward to the great things happening in January. And we did also shop with a cop. That's the other event that we had that was very successful. So I just want you to know that the things that we do in Hope Mills that are family-oriented and that just makes us the town that we are. So again, it's been a good Christmas season for us, being able to do the things we like to do, our traditions, the parade, the Festival of Lights, all the things that the Parks and Rec and Parents Committee contributed to. But it's been a great time for us, being able to get back to normal as close to normal as possible. Next, we have presentations. The first presentation is a public safety building project update, and this was presented by Mr. Scott Garner, our architect. Now I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Garner.
Thank you, ma'am. Very appreciate this opportunity, which is why we give you the opportunity of building this door. We give the government, we have Scott Garner, our architect. We have been working on this project for three and four years. We designed it now in construction. So it's moving along. We think it's going to be a great life building. We're very proud of it, and we're looking forward to making a life building to serve the town of Hope Mills for many years to come. I'm always available for answering questions, addressing any needs or concerns that you might have. If you would like to get in touch with me, contact either the town manager or Drew Hall. If they'd be glad to get in touch with you, I'll be glad to address anything that you might, might be concerned. At this time, we are about fifty-five to sixty percent complete on the building. This last month was a little bit slower than it has been. We have been working around the problems and difficulties you have of getting building materials in this COVID atmosphere. So we've gotten some things out of sequence, and we're trying to work around it to keep the project moving. We've been pretty well so far, but this last month was a little bit slower. In construction, the interior of the stock temporarily. We look forward to getting that back and starting as soon as we get, we know that we have a waterproof roof. We have a temporary roof on the police side. We had some leakage, and now they've done some repairs, come back, done some additional taping and caulking. And so it did not rain, it did not leak this past weekend, so we want to give it another test before we can soon work on the inside. So the next few weeks, the contractor will be concentrating on the exterior. There are things that you can do. You can put up light bulbs, you can put up bars, you can build a trash enclosure. There are a number of things that you can do on the outside. You continue to make some additions, so you will continue to be moving. There are a few things you can do on the inside. We have steel stairs that we can go up. They wouldn't be damaged if you did leak, and supply plumbing and things like that that you can do, which he will continue to do. The contractor is very, very aggressive. We got to try to keep the schedule moving, and we are very aggressive about getting the roof dry, so we have to try and keep the situation. So we are both scheduled, we're in budget, and we're moving forward. So if we have any questions or comments?
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Garner?
Madam Mayor, ma'am. Scott, when do you anticipate on the roofing material for the building to be in?
I'm glad you asked. I meant to say, the original problem we had is we have, it's a standing seam metal roof. And they have the standing seam metal. What we don't have is, we don't have the insulation to go below it. And it's five inches of insulation below it. And it was scheduled to be delivered late September, first of October. That didn't happen, and at that time, they gave us a new date of February. So we cannot confirm on anything, but we still think we're looking forward to it. But we don't have any definite confirmation that it will be, it does come in units like they're very useful, we know it's orange, and it will be full steam ahead.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? No one? Thank you, sir.
Well, we're looking forward to the building, and we're looking forward to a better year.
Mm-hmm.
Merry Christmas to all.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. Thank you for being here. Next, we have a presentation from Rick Hap. He's the CEO of the YMCA of the Sand Hills.
I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of the mayor and the county commissioners and see what the term is for which. Children ages two to fourteen, the second leading cause of accidental death is drowning. Children's leading cause of health risk is obesity. For the first time in history, children are less likely to live a longer lifespan than their parents because of their health condition. Senior adults, due to medications, are living longer, whether not necessarily living healthier. Many of them have a less quality of life due to health complications, especially in the area of arthritis. One out of ten people who live in the community of Hope Mills for sixty-five years of age or older. Our community is the second largest population of wounded veterans in the country. People who have been wounded in combat, people who have been injured in jumps and just physical livers of being in military, that is tremendous a challenge. Our swim teams in Great Creek, Jack Britt, got viewed to practice on the other side of the county in a bubbled outdoor pool that has no heating and no air conditioning and no air circulation at all. There are very limited special needs programs in the area that serve kids and give them the opportunity for programs such as special needs. General recreation, though there are wonderful recreation opportunities in Hope Mills, like anything else, we can always do some more. And finally, there are training and great opportunities for employment in various businesses as they open in the area. In 2018, you all did a study and asked the community the basic question, what would you like to see in the area of recreation to the community of Hope Mills? At the top of the list, with all of the multiple other programs, an indoor aquatic center was the request. So due to the needs that exist in the community, the needs that our neighbors have, the needs our wounded veterans have, the needs our children have, and the very fact that a survey in your community said this is what people want, I've come to forward you tonight to ask for consideration of a partnership. And in short, I'll just read it so I say it correctly. I'm coming to you tonight to request that the town of Hope Mills would partner with YMCA to bring an eight-lane indoor aquatic center to the community. Construction costs of the pool will be covered by the YMCA through fundraising. Location of the pool would be in a yet constructed leased building that would be attached to the new Fit for Life facility that is being built currently on Hope Mills Road. Community and county residents can choose membership for Y by Fit for Life, or they can choose both by discounted rate. This partnership to the town of Hope Mills, what I'm asking for is that you would commit to fifty-five hundred dollars a month for a period of one hundred and twenty months. The funds would be, would not need to become available to the YMCA or to the community until the fall of 2023. And the funds would only be requested if the Y is successful in its fundraising effort of at least three million dollars. And we also find yes answers from two other area of community support groups that would be a part of this partnership. The goal is that we bring to the community aquatic center through the method of YMCA paying for its construction and fundraising, and that three or four different community groups take a little bit of the pie, and so that we can bring in eighteen months or there about an eight-lane indoor pool right on Hope Mills Road. That's my request.
Does anyone have any questions? I think the main thing, too, that was, that you didn't maybe could expand on is the senior programs, the senior adult programs that are, would be available. So could you give a little bit of information about what might be available for seniors?
Yes, what's exciting about this is that because we all get older and because we all have physical challenges as we get older, we're not running to the mirror box anymore in our life. So an indoor pool is an opportunity for those who do have health challenges to be able to work out and exercise at a must-reduce risk physically to their body because there are not compounding issues on their joints, on their limbs, and so forth. And in the Fayetteville area, where we do have an indoor pool and have to have one for years, and the new one we just built up in Martin County, we have hundreds of senior adults who are a part of our water earth ready programs in these classes. So because of arthritis, they are able to take our classes that are included in your membership at no additional cost. Most senior adults, because they are part of the Medicaid system and have a Medicare supplement program, they would get free membership to this operation that would cost them. In the YMCA, we believe every kid deserves a Y, so every membership is income-based. We have people for as little as five dollars who are part of the YMCA a month, and we are desiring not to turn it in one way. And in this aquatic center, we want to build a senior adult program so we can not only offer to help moms and centers, but also recreational social opportunities as well. A place to kind of congregate and hang in the world. And then another part of the element of this aquatic center is a full of childcare. So we would have in this building childcare that is income-based. So for example, during the time of, when school was out of session, the YMCA right here had a hundred and twenty kids. We watched those children every day from seven in the morning until six in the evening, work with them in their meetings with their teachers and their homework, and there was no cost to them in this area. So we want to try to bring similar services and help people find their childcare. So that would be a part of this building as well. I'm only asking a big one portion. So, but yes, seniors would be a huge part of this operation.
Do any questions for Mr. Hap?
Now, sir, when we've talked before, you were going to approach the county and both the Cumberland County School Districts. Have you reached out to either of those as of this time?
At this time, we've talked with some individual members, just a very small group. We want the first steps first, and because this is being built in this community, we want to come to the town of Hope Mills first. But as I've mentioned, if the other two entities choose not to, which is their right, we're not going to put that burden upon you. We're not going to put that burden on one. The project would not be built.
Okay. And another question. Now, talking about with the dual membership with Fit for Life potential discounts, have you approached Fit for Life to see if they would be one of those partners?
They will not be one of those partners. They are already working with us to give us a discounted lease cost to this project.
Okay. So...
So they want to see you there and how they're helping support that by giving us reduced costs.
So they're giving you reduced cost, and then with the, with the discount rate for the memberships, would that be the YMCA reduced cost membership for the dual memberships with the Fit for Life, or is Fit for Life giving that reduced cost membership?
Both.
Both. Okay. Another question.
Our goal would be if people came to this, it would be about fifty thousand square foot of all this elevations. Our goal is to help them, but we don't want the cost to be reduced or not.
Okay. And just to reiterate, if you, it's okay, ma'am. So aside from Silver Sneakers, and as you discussed before, combat disabled veterans that are fifty percent disabled, there would be no other discounts for citizens to include the citizens living in Hope Mills proper versus a Fayetteville citizen coming to the pool?
There would not be a different price rate for those individuals because the people whom we're asking to be part of this is not simply the county, it's also the county and local citizens.
Okay. And all the revenue generated by the memberships for the Y would go directly to the Y?
It goes back into this community. And the YMCA is a nonprofit organization. Like any nonprofit, you have to invest the funds back into the community, back into your operation, and that's where it goes. No one, we're not paying out bonuses or paying out funds to stockholders during that stage.
But none of the revenue is coming back to the town itself, correct?
We will not, we will not be renting the town a check.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I've got a question or two.
Okay.
I wasn't at the other meetings personally planned that way because I wasn't sure the meetings were legal according to our advertisements for possible forms. But some of the questions I have, if there's no free membership for our residents and they're paying fifty-five hundred dollars a year, doesn't that sound kind of crazy?
You mean?
I mean, why would I want to pay fifty-five hundred dollars a year and then have to pay a membership?
So, so I understand it clearly. No community members paying fifty-five. This is a budget operation out of the city of Hope Mills, out of the town. So people aren't paying for it. I know they are indirectly doing tax-based all operations.
That's what I'm getting at. They're my boss.
But it's, I guess, Mr. Legg, it's like anything else. You construct ball fields, but in order for people to play on those ball fields and being an organization, you charge a fee for that program. You have buildings like the town of Hope Mills Rec Center, and if people want to use that building for a special event or an activity, you pay a rental fee for people to use that. You know, there is no municipality that I know in the country that builds building or product or anything. It's, it's absolutely free. The outdoor pools, for example, the city of Hope Mills, the city of Fayetteville, cost everyone two dollars to come in every day to come. And if they don't have the two dollars, they don't come in. You know, we've managed those pools for years, and we provided funds so for kids who didn't have the two dollars, we would pay the two dollars so they could come in. Now, I'm sure the city of Fayetteville wasn't aware that was happening, but that's how kids felt by the two dollars I was giving them. So we're providing the facility, paying for the cost of it. Through membership, we're paying for the operation of it. We're not walking away with a check and just going somewhere else because anybody who has a pool can tell you, even through operations, you cannot cover the cost of it. It's, it's just too expensive. That's why many, many, many communities don't build it. So to have an opportunity for a partnership that's willing to build it for you, and to have an opportunity to see if others will share the cost of its operation, here's a chance to bring a pool to the community that members ask for, their neighbors ask for, at a very minimal investment.
The reason I'm asking some of those questions is, there's no way that that could help our splash pad any that's proposed to be built. There are just a lot of things that I don't see about it yet that's going to profit or benefit our residents. I can see where it's going to benefit Fit for Life and the YMCA, but I failed to see where it's going to benefit us as individuals.
Mr. Legg, that's a great question. But the people who are going to be using this facility are Hope Mills community. This is your neighborhood pool. This is hopefully other people coming to the area of Hope Mills and the YMCA coming to the area of Hope Mills. I mean, our name is the Hope Mills YMCA. We've been here for, since nineteen ninety's, and the programs and services that we offer have been serving the community of Hope Mills. No one lives twenty miles away and uses the Hope Mills YMCA very few times. The people who are using my Hope Mills YMCA are people who live down the street on Fish Road in the neighborhoods that you walk and drive through every day. People who shop at the Y here at our Go to the Love are the people who use my Y. And this facility will be the exact same thing.
Madam Mayor?
Sure.
One more question again.
Okay.
From my understanding, Fit for Life is selling their memberships with the understanding that their members, as far as Rayford, are going to have access to this pool. So from my understanding, it's not going to be just Hope Mills that are being told about this pool.
No, no. That's the Rayford facility. Rayford's building one.
What they're being told is the Hope Mills pool.
I understand. And in any kind of conversation, people will take bits and pieces of your word and say this is what's happening. I need to tell you, my, my board and the owner of Fit for Life understand clearly that you've got to be a member at this YMCA, the Hope Mills Y, to use that Hope Mills pool.
Okay.
So without it, you will not have access to it.
Okay.
Now, you might have someone in Rayford come here and join and use the pool, but that's like you may have somebody in Springfield come in and shop at this water.
And I, just to clarify for Commissioner Legg, our splash pad and our all-inclusive playground, those fundings are coming from the state, and those funds are already earmarked, and they'll be spent for those two facilities. And they're in the, they're in the process now of moving forward with that. So those funds, they won't interfere with those at all, Commissioner Legg. That money's already earmarked and has to be used for those two things.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hap, based on what I've heard you say, if everybody, we have a buy-in with all the partners, this, this would be a turnkey process, pretty much. Also, it's a benefit to our seniors. It's an investment in our youth. There's another group that I thought about while you was talking, and this Pat, Patty, the divers group. And I just happened to be in a conversation not too long ago with someone about that. And actually, youth are getting into diving now, and they're looking for areas that they can go in and practice and do that, to train them in. A pool is the safest place to do it for young people. It really is. And I'm, and to also, possibility of offsetting the cost, look at, maybe relook at partnering with VA and both, Fort Bryant, because I was talking to a couple of veterans this weekend, and they, I say, hey, what are you doing for pain? Because I suffer from pain tremendously. They said Aqua Therapy. They said it was the best treatment they've had for their pain. And I said, you know, I need you to put that in writing because that's the argument that I need to take to VA when I talk to them next month at our next county meeting, to let them know that we need them to invest in this project so that we can offset the cost for the veteran, so that all veterans will benefit from this, whether they fifty percent, ten percent, nine percent, whatever the case may be. And I'm sure that's something that VA would be willing to buy, to take part of and be part of.
Commissioner Marley or Commissioner, or Mayor Protem, do you have questions or comments?
I, I don't have questions. I just think it's an investment in the community, especially the way this community has grown with residents. And being the second largest municipality, our residents are still going out in other communities paying to use their facilities and pools and things like that. So I, I think it's something that is needed in the community.
Commissioner Marley?
I agree, Mayor, I, I feel it's, it's something good, it's something that's the community's wanted for some time. Every time we do a Parks and Rec study, a pool, a splash pad is at the top of the list for the amount of money, turnkey project. I don't see how we can lose, I mean, it's going to benefit the seniors, the veterans, the kids. And if, if we waited on the town to be able to do it, we will never have. To just be honest with you, because we couldn't afford to build a aquatic center on our own standalone. We, there ain't no way we could keep the maintenance up on a pool that size just the sheer cost of that, plus the manpower, the employees to run it like it needs to be run. I, I just don't see where we could do it on our own. And we had this opportunity maybe, what, five years ago? Or, or about five years ago? And the board at that time kicked it out, they didn't want to talk about it. I was on the Parks and Rec Committee at that time and, and we voted right next door to ask the board to move on with that project and research it, and they shot it down. And this is our chance to make that decision right and do something for our community and get them something that they want. So, I'm all for it.
Okay, do we have anyone that would like to make a motion to approve this partnership?
Ma'am, I've got something else I'd like to ask.
Okay, yes, sir, okay.
Uh, thank you. What kind of programs will you be running through the YMCA that may conflict with the programs that our Parks and Rec Department sponsors? Like baseball, softball, football? Do you do any of those?
Uh, no, we do not. We've talked with the Parks and Rec Director, and by the way, if, if you are here, he's an excellent young man. You've got a, a great young man there. And it makes no sense for us to try to duplicate a program or service if you are the owner and the run. That's why we're not building a wellness center, we're not building a gymnasium. We're just building a pool and a child care center. We don't want to get them into any other area of business.
That's all I have for now, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll go and make a motion if that'd be fine.
Okay.
Help me a word, what, what do we need to approve? Just approve to move forward with the partnership?
And with, I guess, Ms., Mr. Holland, because we will be obligating funds, but not until twenty twenty-three, is there something that in particular we need to say?
To approve the par, the partnership, you can mention the hundred twenty months, eighty-five hundred, start in the fall of twenty-three.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, wouldn't be pending the...
Right, it'd be pending the other, in other words, our partnership just, would be pending the other partners?
And Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I forgot just one little piece, that the possibility that costs, won't even cost us that much.
And then, I guess, the other thing would be that amount might be less depending upon what we may be able to acquire with other partnerships. In other words, we're obligating fifty-five hundred with the hopes that we might pull in another, somebody would, would this?
The reason the YMCA, besides building it, is also contributing fifty-five hundred dollars is because it will be who lost the mind of the partners, so everyone's waiting to come down. So, we're excited about Commissioner Legg's relationship with VA. If we can find a membership of that not six thousand dollar budget money that they can make the same day, that's a god who won't grant it.
Okay.
So, are, are you looking for, for example, a commitment or a letter of commitment from the board at this stage?
I'm looking for an actual motion that said that if the other things are met, then it will be in sponsorship and follow-up of two thousand and twenty-three.
So, we just need to make a motion to approve the fifty-five hundred dollars for one hundred twenty months starting in the fall of twenty twenty-three pending partnership?
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
A second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Case passes three to two. Thank you, sir.
Awkward giving me this time to talk with the community.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is case Z O N twenty-one zero zero fifteen, rezoning R ten district to CP district on point fifty-two plus or minus acres, a restrictive zoning district located north of Elwood Drive and west of Hope Mills Road. Joseph Riddle and Trina Riddle owner, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin before we open up public hearing.
Hello, Madam Mayor, four members and definitely four members. As stated, this is a rezoning request from the R ten district to CP district. A subject property is a zero point five two acre vacant parcel fronted across from the hundred forty feet from the north side of Elwood Drive. Terms of surrounding zoning properties to the immediate north and east. A designated CP plan commercial district with the staff's residence and personal community to the immediate west regulated under the R ten residential district. Lots to the immediate southwest are developed, significant residences, vacant lots to the immediate southeast regulated by the CP district tied to a recent rezoning of the case P twenty-one fourteen. Community, the commercial zone properties to the north south and east are also under the same ownership as the subject property. Water and sewer services are available to my question and assessment along Elwood Drive. At the proposal, the property owners request a restricted zoning from the R ten to the CP district as it relates to the land use, the land use plan for southwestern Cumberland land use plan caused by low density residential. So, this is not a plan, but I'll go with additional aspects of it. On the subject property that you see a hashtag in red, it just kind of gives you further break up or make makeup of corridor and brush your property, uh, to set along Hope Mills Road. If you look right across there with the large brush your leaves, that, you see, that is the actual site of the previous presentation that we're talking about in the YMCA. This is, uh, just give you a, a area photograph of land use that shows the residential system that we're covering. This is just a more, uh, of a, a smaller scale of the subject property. This shows you location, height, and natural pollution soil that are not located in the subject property. It also shows the left-hand side of the area. This indicates, uh, what, what I was discussing earlier in terms of the land use designation of low density residential. So, this request to CP, although staff is requesting approval, I recommend this, if it is not required on the southwest side, so that use map change would be required. And these are your site photographs. This is a view of the, uh, subject property across from Elwood Drive. This is a view east on Elwood, the subject property is to the left. This is a view standing on the subject property and view of the actual Fit for Life without current construction. This is a view west along Elwood, the subject property is to the right side. And this concludes my presentation on that, if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions in reference to this zoning? No questions? Okay, then we'll open up public hearing. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? If you give your name and address, please.
Troy F. Land thirteen thirty-three Morganton Road, um, with Larry, Larry King and Associates. We're a land surveying management firm representing the owner of this property. He intended to be here tonight but has taken ill. He just wants to square up the other properties that he has at that intersection that are commercially zoned. The, the property that fronts on North Main Street is very shallow going down Elwood and he feels like since he owns his tract of land, it would be good to have all of it done commercially so that if he gets anything going on that other corner, he would have the depth to do that. As of right now, he does not have any prospective tenants or buyers. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this rezoning?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Any other questions or for either Chancellor or the, anything? Okay.
I'd like to point out that the motion is, is on the second page of the staff report. The board used the break for patients of staff.
Yeah, it's a, it's a long motion, right?
They all off.
Yes.
I'll make the first one. Oh, yeah, you do the next one. In case Z O N twenty-one zero zero one five, the town of Hope Mills recommends approval of the rezoning request from R ten residential district to CP plan commercial district. Commissioners find the request is not consistent with the southwest Cumberland land use plan was called for low density residential and open space at this location. However, commissioners further find approval is an amendment to the adopted current southwest Cumberland land use plan and the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional requests or application for amendment to the said map for this request. The request would provide a definitive demarcation of commercial developments for the surrounding neighborhood to the nearby thoroughfare. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because the CP plan commercial district would allow commercial use, uses at an intensity that would be compatible and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That will come with sidewalks, right?
Now, there's no, now, when he actually does, um, develop the subject property, that's when sidewalks are, make sure you put what straight you're zoning.
This is just the zoning.
Okay, other questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, we have case Z O N twenty-one zero zero twenty-two, rezoning RR district to R six district on thirty point fifty-five plus or minus acres or more restrictive zoning district located south of Corporation Drive and east of Chickenfoot Road, Charles Nancy Maxwell owners, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Okay, for case Z O N dash twenty-one, dash twenty-two, the vacant subject tract is thirty point fifty-five acres in size and comprised of three parcels of land with no current frontage, but is south of Corporation Drive and west of Chickenfoot Road. With respect to the surrounding zoning, the area to the immediate north and west is owned by the CP commercial district, the area to the immediate south regulated by the CP land commercial and R six residential district. The subject property partially littered with land and hydrogen soil located in the area to the east, which is, which was recently annexed into the town of Hope Mills and the request for it is rezoned to the R six residential district. This parcel is under the same ownership of the subject tract and is intended to be devised and developed. As it relates to recent activity, as indicated above, the area to the immediate east of the subject property was recently annexed into the town of Hope Mills by the Board of Commissioners on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, under Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. At that time, staff informed the board that there had been extensive discussions between the proposed developer and the Hope Mills plan committee. Discussion centered around facilitation of a project that contemplates the combination of the annexed parcel with the subject property under consideration, assuming for the development of a subject. The annexation petition was approved with authorization to staff to proceed with an initial zoning request for the R six residential district. As the subject property is tied to the recently annexed parcel, the current zoning request to the R six district is to bring the property into unified zoning district for development. The property owner's request for strictly zoning, so there is technically not any site plan attached to this development. The southwest land use plan, the CP land, is area for industrial, so this request to R six is not compliant. I'll go through, uh, the initial portion of the presentation at this time. This is a, um, a, a view that shows you the subject property past the, um, surrounding the red, but, um, it also shows you the makeup of the area. We have the CP areas to the north, west, and south. R six is to the south and the A one piece to the immediate east is the subject property that was just re, uh, annexed into the town. This is a land use, um, area that does give you, um, some indications of commercials and family industrial properties that are surrounding areas. This is another version of your, this is basically showing you some of the massive amounts of commercially zoned properties. These are properties that are located in the town of Hope Mills limits and currently solely commercial, but currently under the local label. This is a more of a regional, uh, map. I put this in there to show you, if you look around this area, subject property outlined is highlighted in yellow. But if you look, there is a massive amount of commercial, these own property that I just referenced in the previous map, and it shows you how big that is to the north, northwest, southeast, I mean southwest and south. Um, if you look to the north, northeast, southeast, you're seeing the massive amounts of industrial zone property in the area. And in this area right here, you can see my, uh, uh, these two areas here, those are two recently, um, annexed properties that are under, uh, development for industrial. The triangular piece is a piece that is actually, um, finalizing the construction of one of their massive buildings that was approved, uh, for industrial rezoning a couple of years back. It was approved for three total structures, one of the structures just finished in completion. And they have, uh, contact with us about the possible, uh, possibly starting construction of the section. The piece across the street, uh, from that, um, is a piece that was rezoned fifty-nine years ago. This map shows you, um, the location of height, the natural pollution soil, the immediate area, the immediate location of the waters. This is just simply, uh, a graph representation of the southwest plan that does designate this as commercial. Again, as stated earlier, this is not in compliance as this request is for residential zoning. Based on your area photographs, this is a view along Chickenfoot Road. It's kind of gives you, um, a view to the access that it provides. There's a dirt road that gives access to the subject property, as indicated earlier, it's kind of landlocked in it. So, through those trees, the subject property is just beyond our视线. This is a, you love the actual subject property of the residential structure that is currently open. This is another view of the subject property. This is a view along Chickenfoot Road, the key areas with the nothingness to the left side of the street. And this is a view, um, across the street from Chickenfoot Road. And that concludes my development of my presentation, the staff recommendations for approval. Planning board recommendation was denied by R six, but approval of R fifteen. Um, so I'd like to open the floor to any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions of, um, Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
You say the planning board gave approval on one zoning and denied the other zoning?
Yes, ultimately, there was some concerns about the density, but, um, they ultimately recommended a, um, different residential classification that would have yielded a lower amount of lots, but that recommendation was for, uh... But that recommendation was for, uh, residential zoning, it just was a different residential zoning. So while the advocate of the rezonance plan board recommended that, but again, they did recommend residential zoning.
Yeah, I, from what I can see, the zoning around that, uh, that's God's country out there. The building that may go on there may be ours. So whether or not we can do anything about it like that, I don't know, but I think, uh, the request is reasonable.
Madam, ma'am, yeah? What would be the impact on commercial development?
Um, from my understanding, just from a economic development standpoint, um, I speak about this a lot especially in this area. We're trying to create a harmonious balance with a number of uses in a, in a time where there is this significant amount of, uh, development that is enticed in this area. Um, what you have with three different types of developments, we're trying to create a balance of this industrial, residential, and commercial. So if you look at the massive amounts of commercial, and I'll go back to this map here. If you look at the massive amounts of undeveloped commercial land, that land has been vacant for quite some time. Look at the residential areas, we actually have residential development and we facilitate, we're facilitating additional, uh, I mean, industrial development. We facilitate currently more industrial development. What I'm constantly hearing from the development community is that in order to get vacant commercial areas developed, they need what we call rooftops. So the rooftops are the residential development that is asked, um, trying to facilitate that. So, um, to answer your question, that's ultimately what we're trying to, um, with respect to, um, stuff.
I have no question.
Other questions? What would be the reasoning that they would have selected R fifteen over R six?
I think that conversation was primarily tied to just density number, but it's one thing I would like to point out with this property. And with respect to the property that's to the right, uh, to the east that is going to be provided with, um, there's a large, like, um, here, um, the green area that you see is coming off of ninety-five into the area to the right of the subject property. That's the area that is going to be provided with, that is a large wetland area there. Um, there's topography there that provides some challenges. So it's not your typical, if you want to just look at thirty acres and just divide it by the amount of lot size, that would yield a certain number of units. But if you don't take into consideration that there's a significant question, is this undevelopable in terms of the presence of wetlands and things of nature? Then I think that's why, uh, there may have been, or may not have been an apples to apples comparison with respect to the R six request and R fifteen. I think if you look at R fifteen or R six, it's easy to say, hey, that number of public lots is a large number of lots. But when you take into consideration of the amount of, um, of development they can't perceive, that's why, um, the developer chose R six. But I think the main pushback from the county was just simply on the number of lots. They chose, uh, the R fifteen recommendation that would yield a few lots, but I don't think that that would have happened.
Other questions?
Chancellor, staff's recommending R six?
Yes, uh, and one thing I want to make sure I'm very clear on. Um, we took this entire piece through a very extensive, um, planning process. Um, if you look at my staff report, we approved the annexation of the piece to the west of that land, that was in October. Uh, we were first engaged by the, uh, engineer in summertime. And so what ultimately happens is when we bring these annexations to the board, you notice we actually have a recommendation from all the departments. So on October eighteenth, we actually presented the annotation. It had a recommendation with group from planning, fire, corrections, and public works. And at that time, we requested R six as an initial zoning because we annex a property, we have to designate it under the zoning. That's the piece that's adjacent to this subject property that's going to be provided. I say all that to say that this request for you tonight to R six is to mirror the annexed piece that's going to come back to you through initial zoning next month. So that, the current question we have now is directly tied to the annexation they did on the area. So it makes sense that this place is R six tonight because that's what the initial zoning request was for, the piece that's adjacent to it.
Any other questions? Okay, open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this proposal?
I'm Michael Blakely, directing design services, uh, six seven two eight Carleton Road, Sanford, North Carolina, two seven three three zero. And I'm the big engineer for this project. Um, Chancellor did a great job, uh, explaining the project. I'd like to answer any questions y'all may have. Uh, the, to clarify, the, uh, decision by the planning board for recommending the R, uh, the fifteen thousand square foot lot was based on traffic, uh, concerns that were brought up by, uh, an adjacent developer. And, uh, that, like I said, that was based off of the six thousand square foot per acre number, but not taking into effect the natural, uh, the natural features that are on the site that have limited the site for full development. Uh, because we're looking at nine, there's nine point thirteen acres of wetlands on the site. Uh, so we're not developing the entire site. We're, we're just basically clustering the development in the usable areas with no impact, no natural pollution. So I'd like to answer any questions y'all may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor of this project? At this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this project?
Good evening, Rob Patton, Vice President for the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. Uh, my address is four two one three Docmu Road in Hopeville, Fayetteville. Um, good evening, uh, two points to consider, uh, why we don't like this, uh, project when we're in favor of it. But one is the increased traffic, it's already been mentioned. Um, the planned development has two ingress, ingress routes that are going to dump out on Corporation, which is, as you know, a main thoroughfare for the industrial traffic that's going up into the already established Walmart as well as the burgeoning Liberty Point. Liberty Point has, has mentioned, I believe, three more buildings that are planned. That's going to bring in, uh, close to three quarters of a million more square foot. It's going to increase the industrial traffic. So that's one of our first, uh, points. Second point is the continued encroachment on the industrial development. As we get more and more housing units, it's going to encroach on that chokeout industrial development as well as heavy commercial. Um, and as we get projects in, quite often, they want to be away from residential noise hazard and the other hazards that they have. They want to stay away from residential developments. This is going to start really approaching upon what we have going in this area. So going forward, what I would ask is, one, uh, we make a concerted effort to protect our industrial plan, our heavy commercial plan, protect it from the residential developments that can choke out that. Um, the second piece is, if we can get more involved, bring in the, the EDC earlier into these discussions, that would help so that we can get these factors out there. And so we, we go for, so we're not, uh, in the last minute, you know, problems that we're potentially having. I totally respect, uh, owners' rights to develop their property. We want to be there early enough so that decision makers can have the best performance here. So, except for any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, I'm Palmer Williams, La Cenex Commercial Properties, uh, two sixteen Devon Street, Fayetteville, Montana. Um, and I was going to expand on the economic development comments. Uh, I spoke about this to the county commissioners and, uh, we do share a lot of concerns with all this traffic. This would be the only residential development on this corridor since we, uh, with the county, the remaining vacant land out there. Uh, we just signed a lease with USPS that'll bring about two hundred jobs to the area. Um, and we have, we've already submitted plans to build the next building, which is a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Which will start in the first quarter, start in the second quarter. Um, so with that being said, I just, I, I, I worry about we feed all this two hundred some lots into that Corporation Drive and have another access up there by the, the OJ angle. We just put a stoplight into fixing problems, uh, to, to increase the value of the industrial land. And now you're, you don't want to come back and hinder what the future could hold for this area. So I'm really against it and I, you know, on top of that, it's been brought my attention that there's not much capacity in these schools anyways up here. So when you put six hundred units in this area, where are they going to get the school off? I don't have a clue about that, but, uh, I just want you to consider all the future impacts it will have from the economic development, master planning standpoint. So, um, with that being said, I, I disagree with having any residential go on this Corporation Drive period, but if you're going to allow it, I just don't think R six is, is the right idea there.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
So you know, you talk about these buildings you're building and you talk about the people you're going to bring in, create jobs and everything. Where are they going to live? Like, I, I don't want to drive, you know, an hour to get to work. I don't want to live in Robinson County or Blading County and drive to work. I like living close to where I work. So I, and, and there was no concern when Commissioner Legg brought, everybody talks about traffic. Everybody talks about traffic. Well, neither one of your organizations were concerned about the traffic that Dirtbag L's cause every night when, uh, Commissioner Legg brought that to you, people parking up and down the road.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, but just went out the point, we're actually leasing land to Dirtbags to actually.
Exactly, so their traffic problem ain't a problem to you.
It is, if we, if we don't allow them to.
So what have y'all done to correct that traffic problem?
Well, I don't know what they're going to do when we don't allow them to park on our.
Well, you leased the land to them, so you owned the land. So what are you going to do with the traffic problem that you're creating by leasing to them on Corporation Drive? We haven't heard about that, but we've heard about the houses coming in and the traffic is going, the problems it's going to cause you. But the business that you're leasing to is causing a lot of traffic problem out there and a lot of safety concern.
So just the parking, so that, because that sheriff's calling me just to help out temporarily. I didn't approve their development plans or anything like that, but, uh, they, they did not have enough, the right amount of parks on their actual site for the use they have. And, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of temporarily helping them, but regardless, that, that's going to go away. And those people are still going to come there to that brewery and that's, that's a problem in itself. And we're having to go and widen, we're widening three lanes all the way down there with our, where our development is. So we're, we're helping a good bit of the traffic out there as it is. That's just going to make it even worse.
And I understand, but these, these buildings, these big buildings, I love them, I don't have no problem with them. I think it's great bringing jobs to the community. It's a wonderful thing you're doing. I commend you on it. I appreciate you bringing it to Hope Mills. But at the same time, they're not, there's no conveniences for anybody that lives out in that area. We bring in the houses, we bring in more restaurants, we bring in more strict complexes with, uh, people bringing in small businesses, local businesses in, people making money that way. Yeah, you got the postal service business and you're building these big warehouse companies and stuff, but there's nothing for, there's nothing for me as a citizen going on out there to offer me any conveniences. And I live in that, I live closer to that end of town. There's no conveniences. You look on Legion Road, there's restaurants, there's a Walmart. Go into this end of town, I mean, you got conveniences, you have to provide conveniences for people.
Yeah, I mean, they'll probably houses there, there's another four hundred houses going on this backside of San Onrood. There's plenty of rooftops going on out there. I don't think you have to worry about having places for people to live. There's just a way to plan it out to where you're not interfering with your other developments. You want to work together, not work against each other. And, I mean, we're better, I, I, I think they should go develop their property, there's definitely a way to do it. But I think this is a little aggressive in my mind and, I mean, I've seen how municipalities grow too quick and then you have to go back later on and fix the infrastructure to provide that much density. So, I mean, that's my perspective as a developer.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Madam, ma'am, yeah?
Yes, sir.
We have a problem trying to balance commercial and residential in all aspects and all parts of, of town. We like to try to keep those balances as close as possible so that we don't have a strain on one, too many commercial business, not enough rooftops. I think I heard mayor, mayor referred to it one time as bricks and mortar. That can go both ways, it can go commercial, go residential. But I don't see how we can keep a, a man from using his personal property in there when you guys come in from wherever you're at and build on that property next to it that causes a major traffic jam. And I was just, when Commissioner Marley spoke, I was just sitting here thinking about, gosh almighty. These buildings he's going to put up is going to put a load of traffic on Corporation Drive. We already have a problem with Dirtbag L's parking along the end of the road and had to come to CU to get more parking off the road, but they still park along the road, so I don't know who's going.
All these people are going to be drinking beer too, so I mean, they're going to be parking all around there even worse than it already is now. I, that doesn't, that doesn't help the situation much, but I understand your point. But I think this, this has always been a master plan, commercial, flex, industrial corridor. It's just very difficult to mix high-density residential into all of that with eighteen wheeler traffic and everything else. You try to blend that and it becomes very difficult and you chuck out all that traffic all the way back to ninety-five. Um, so I don't know how that's not clear here. If you go out there, it just doesn't seem right to even think about wanting to put that residential traffic going all around that, those eighteen wheelers.
Well, I don't. I don't, so somewhere we got to draw the line and, and try to balance it. And don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be rude, but if they build the houses and the children are there, Commonwealth County will build the schools, there's never a problem. We got two schools in that area that can take those children.
There's six hundred units in these, in this general area, I know they're, for some reason, they're being resigned separately, so you're not seeing the big picture. But when you put six hundred units in the small little tracks, I mean, it's big, but if you think about this area right here, I mean, you're putting a lot of density in in a matter of three years. I mean, you can't wait till after it's built and then put a school in. And I guess they'll have to get a private school or something temporarily, but, um, that's not the big problem. The big problem is trying to blend that much residential with commercial and industrial.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition to this project? Okay.
If I could, um, to be, one thing I'd like to make clear to you guys is this is a, um, a case for a zone. The entity that typically handles traffic concerns, analysis of traffic, is the N C B O T. Um, the engineer and developers are currently having conversations with the entity. We have not expressed in any way that they have any objectives to this development. But one thing I want to make sure we understand, depending on the type of development, whether it's industrial development, whether it's massive residential development, or whether it's commercial development. They have to approach the entity, get their driving through this, B O T is going to analyze the project to determine what that is, how that is. Sometimes there's a deceleration lane because they want to allow the cars to be able to stack on a, a new separate dedicated lane. Like if you're talking about the intersection of Chickenfoot Road and Corporation Drive, they would probably require a right of acquisition so that you have a lot of vehicles to stack the trucks. If you're talking about, they want to. If you're talking about, they want to map this traffic impact, so, right there, the development. I'm just saying that you can't underestimate or expect for a zoning developer to deal with traffic concerns because there is an agency that specifically deals with that. This is the same thing applies to the school system. If there is an impact that provides some choking of the actual school system, Compton County Schools will come into play to determine if another school system is going to... Another, a final point is, I want to make this clear, this site is not suitable for industrial development. You're not going to get industrial development to attract to a site that has nine to ten acres of land. So, we have to make sure we have, we have this to have some conversation. That doesn't mean that we're choking out the industry, because as we speak, next month, we have the initial meeting for another industry piece that we had in last month. We had conversations for weeks ago about a concrete backs plan that is industrial. It's just outside of, I mean, my eighties of working, working on Corporation Drive. So, while we're having this conversation, I'm entertaining commercial, residential, and industrial development. As I said before, we're just trying to create a very delicate balance when everybody is calling. That doesn't mean we facilitate anything, but there is going to be some balances. But you have checks and balances in place with respect to traffic, and the school system, and the policy costs coming up.
Motion to close public hearing?
So, move.
Okay, public hearing's closed. Just one question from me, and how many total units can be built on this total piece of property? Not just this one, the whole thing? If you go with that zoning?
Can we ask the engineer that's in charge of that project? He may have those numbers.
Do you have for all, both pieces?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, we have proposed two hundred and fifty-nine at the six thousand square foot. But we've actually looked at the, uh, but with the, if you had, did not take weapons in, in perspective, it'd be five hundred and thirty allowed, which you could take forty percent of that out for B and Bs and strips. So, if you did exactly the acreage, you could do five hundred and thirty. But if you took sixty percent of that, it would be in the three hundred sum range. And what we have proposed, what we plan on proposing is two hundred and fifty-nine max. But we are actually going to do less than that because the market is calling for a larger lot. Not a fifteen dollars square foot lot, but like a seven dollars square foot lot. So, you're actually going to get less density than what's available at the R six designation.
Any other questions?
Uh, just for Chancellor. So, based on your recommendation, or the staff recommendation, we are looking at little or no impact to the commercial, industry side?
To me, there is an impact that would be positive.
Okay.
What I'm hearing is, we have had weapons, they told us they brought public to this area. And the first thing they say is we need to touch. So, there will be an impact on the commercial development, but to me, it would be a positive impact to spawn more commercial development. And that's speaking to what Mr. Marley said. I'm living great street. There's the Bojangles, and I'll be somewhere. That is it. And so, you're talking about being able, having to drive down Chickenfoot, up Corporation, eight seven, just to get to Blue Park. We're trying to create the rooftops to the tracks. There's about six hundred acres of undeveloped commercial zone property inside the town of Hope Mills. And it's headquarters, completely vacant. So, to me, it will have an impact, but in my opinion, it would have a positive impact because it would attract more material than the residential area.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. Do we know the price point of these houses?
They're, they're in the three hundred thousand price range.
Ready for a motion, Mary Warner?
Yes, ma'am.
You going to read it?
Yes, please.
Mary, make a motion in case Z O N dash twenty-one dash zero zero two-two. The town of Hope Mills recommends approval of the rezoning request from RR Rural Residential District to R six Residential District. Commissioners find the request is not consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, which calls for heavy commercial in this location. However, Commissioners further find, A, approval is an amendment to the adopted current Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional request or application for amendment to said map for this request. B, the RR Rural Residential District is primarily intended for manufactured housing units and agricultural purposes on lots utilized primarily for septic service with no public access to water, which is not suitable for quality residential development. And C, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because R six District would allow development consistent with, and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning as well as projected development trends.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, and the other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you. Next, we have case Z O N twenty-one dash zero zero two-three, rezoning R ten District to CP CZ District for Motor Vehicle Repair on point five seven, plus or minus acres or more restrictive zoning, forty-one seventy-six Legion Road, Roger and Pam Bedsoe owners. Turn it over to Chancellor.
Okay, uh, in reference to this particular development, the subject property is a zero point five seven acre track completed at the seven six Legion Road. At the intersection, Legion Road and Elk Road, currently developed, seeing that it's residence. The site is located in a very well established commercial corridor, surrounded by fossils regulated under the CP, MP, C two P, RT, and O and I conditions. The fossil has approximately a hundred and fifty seven feet affronted along Elk Road and a hundred and thirty three feet affronted along Legion Road. Fossil at the opposite intersection of this area was also recently resold to the Seaport District as well. As it relates to the proposal, the property owner requests an additional zoning to facilitate a motor vehicle repair facility and impose commercial structure, seventeen hundred square feet in size. Appropriate proposed conditions are as follows. Front yard setback, then proposed twenty feet. Side yard fifteen feet, rear yard fifteen feet. In terms of signs, they want two, uh, freestanding signs. They want a reduction of ten foot setback to five feet. They want a hundred square foot mark for each proposed sign, and they want four wall signs. They also want an eight foot wire flapper. One thing I want to point out with this development as well, they actually made this case plan and has this in the town as well. But when you look at my recommendation, uh, on the back where it actually lists what these conditions are, you see a slight change just in the signage. Um, I want to point out, when you're dealing with conditional zoning, that gives a developer and applicant the ability to massage down the development that goes on any site. They have some constraints. And so, when you're talking about these conditions, they have to be agreed upon with respect to the condition. If you're making this, you're looking at what I'm talking about. I give some small tweaks with respect to the condition, but only with the signage. You don't have any problems with the development at all, but with respect to some of the signage, they're not fit up with four wall signs, they're requesting two wall signs. They're comfortable with two freestanding signs at a hundred square feet, we're requesting two freestanding signs at seventy-five square feet. So, some of these small changes that were requested that appear to be ever of the condition, if they haven't imposed, they're just related to us kind of quietly massage it down, the signage. Everything else with the setbacks for support of the applicant has made aware of these proposed changes. I'll show some additional information. Some of the property is outlined in red at the intersection of Legion. This is kind of showing you the makeup of the area, just in reference, just to the southwestern edge of the neighborhood wall on development. So, if you're standing at the neighborhood wall on development, at the intersection of Legion and Elk, that house right across there, that's the southern property on that corner. This is just giving another makeup of the, of the land use to show that this is a very, very, um, there's a large commercial presence at this intersection. This is another view, showing you some more breakdown, is some industrial development. That I ninety-five development is what you see over to the right, um, there's neighborhood B. This is your location of water, sewer, and hydrant, and water source, your own, uh, in the surrounding property. This is actually a land use designation, it isn't compliant with the land use. Uh, sometimes we, uh, push these projects, and, uh, but this one is in compliance. This is a heavy commercial land designation, and the request to CP CZ District is in compliance with the land. This is a actual, uh, copy of the site plan. You see that they have a entrance on Legion and Elk. Another thing I want to make sure that you're aware of, they have gone through, and they are going through DOT. So, that's what I mean when I say we bring in this case plan, and we were having very, very extensive conversations about water, sewer, DOT, and things of that nature. So, this site plan is reflective, in my opinion, of their conversation. And this is, uh, maybe just I look at, this is a view of the subject property, how it's currently located on the property. This is a view north of Legion, the subject property to the left side of the screen. This is a view, um, standing on the subject property, looking east of Legion. This is a view south of Legion, the subject property is to the right of the screen. You can see they put one on it, this is to the right. This is just an airport overlay map, if you see. Right there, uh, it's on the very, very small corner of the airport overlay. But just to give you insight on that, airport overlay district regulations, or when you're going vertical, then it would create issues. I don't see there being any issues with this type of development in, um, in reference to this location inside the airport overlay. And I know the four different questions that you have. My staff recommendation is, in the back and in the end, these signed portions of the conditions, I'd like for those to be definitely read into the record on if you're, uh, what you're supporting.
Mayor? And, and your staff's, your, your staff is approving these setbacks, correct?
Yes. Um, because the, the, the one thing that I want to point out with respect to the site plan, um, and what I think led itself directly to the conditional zoning request, this is a double front line. So, you have, which means that they're opposing a fifty-foot setback on Legion and a fifty-foot setback on Elk. Um, so, if we just did a straight rezon in the commercial, you're taking pretty much all of that small lot with setbacks. Uh, I'll give you a perfect example of a gas station that we did do a conditional zoning, is the, um, um, Circle K in the Rockfish. And Main, if you look at that site, that site is true front. You have Main Street, you have Rockfish, and you have Bullitt, and it's a long, narrow lot. So, if we were to impose fifty-foot setbacks off Legion, I mean, off Main Street, fifty-foot off Rockfish, fifty-foot off Bullitt, it's a dead site. So, what they did, what conditional zoning allows you to do is you design the site based on the constraints and your proposed conditions are what is needed for the facilitation of the site. So, if you notice behind zero and out the setbacks, the setbacks are requested from what the design is needed for a pretty decent, like, real, realistic development of the site. And that's primarily in my opinion, why they act with conditional zoning. I do not think the site is developable under your traditional...
It's, since it's going to be a motor vehicle repair facility, how many motor vehicles can be on that lot? And how many can stay there while, is it going to be a temporary repair? In other words, I go in and get oil changed and I go out? Or is it going to be, I've envisioned some of the other areas that we have motor vehicle repairs in small spaces, and it ends up with a lot of vehicles waiting to be repaired?
My understanding of this is, I think, uh, I think this is one of the oil looking places. So, this would be, I wouldn't consider, I wouldn't consider this to be a place where someone would want to get major work done.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't anticipate, and I know exactly what you're talking about.
Well, and, and, well, and, and there's also on down Legion Road, there's a repair shop. And that repair shop has grown, and there's a lot of vehicles behind it now because they've got a vacant lot back there. I just want to make sure that, that this corner, that is a very small corner, but there is adjacent land to it, that if it's a, if it is something that's, you know, and I noticed there's driveways in, but I, I think Commissioner Legg asked questions about the, the tire place that was going up on Rockfish Road. The same question was, are they going to be doing more extensive repair, which would require a car to stay there? And that, that would be my only, that's my only question, is...
I would say this is more towards oil changes, or the tire places more towards tires. And that's the case that's going up next. But I give you a proper example, at the corner of Cumberland and Main is the other tire shop. And that, that operation, if you look at it now, we very rarely see cars stacked in that direction. So, that's just kind of give you an idea of how that tire shop is coming to be.
Okay, that's my only question.
But I will say too, uh, the Golden Horseman is the best way to rule to police that situation you're talking about.
Okay, I guess open, public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning?
Evening, I'm easy borrowing, I'm the Gaddam Engineering, and we engineers on this project. And we just wanted to bring to you, I'm the Gaddam Engineering, I'm two nine zero five, brilliant, Park Station Room, North Carolina, two seven seven one three. And as Chancellor Norrie presented very well, we've been talking for a little time about the conditional zoning of this project. It is a small site, and so it needs some special conditions around to some setbacks to allow for a small building to exist and be able to do all the functions of the, the particular traffic of getting in and getting out. Uh, we've also been in conversations with NC DOT about Elk and Legion. There's actually some, um, there's an existing entrance or driveway off of Elk, but there's also, um, and, and also off of Legion, but there's some conversation about making right in and right out. There's already, um, you know, but that site is designed to just handle daily work and not anything overnight. There's definitely hours, uh, I think it ends by, you know, later than seven or ten. It's, it's definitely, you know, regular hours, it's normally gets shorter. Uh, they don't have any, um, work that's allowed. It is, uh, you know, commercial, so it's in line with what is in the neighborhood, uh, Walmart and the traffic and the kind of street that it's located on. But, uh, we believe it's a good, uh, fit for this particular corner.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone would like to speak against this project?
Hi, I'm Stanley Bailey, and it's fifty-eight fifty-seven Hunting Ridge Road. I've got a couple of questions, I'm not against it, all that's going to turn commercial. I'm looking at the landscaping, I'm kind of impressed with landscaping. Also, certainly been a picture over there, there's a big tree that looked like it might be a hardwood, and it'd be nice to save it. My thing is, with every car dealership, whatever we want to call it, anybody's worked on cars, we can go down Hope Mills Road, and we can look how beautiful it is, right people? But every time they do this, why can we not ask them to put a six-foot privacy fence? So, if they're working any cars, or any cars want to... So if they're working any cars or any cars will stay there overnight, they have over the weekend, or somebody's gonna leave it there for them to work on the next day, that we cannot hide this stuff? We're gonna get all this traffic coming in, leaves roadless, very well, very well kept up, but why can we not require this? They have tires laying out, oil cans, garbage back of it. Only tires laying out, we need to clean up this area. And if you go down Hope Mills Road, you will have to agree with me, it needs to be cleaned up. So I'm warning at, on the fairness commission, as a private citizen living in this town, I want my town to flip us, I want it to prosper, but at the same time, I want it taken care of. I don't want the neighbors to complain that the town of Hope Mills let them put it up there and did not take care of the entire. All right?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Um, one clarification, just to confirm, um, privacy fence that's required along northern, um, eastern portions of the property, the board commission, um, is only any portion of that site that's required, uh, privacy fence. Um, but I would caution, um, because it is the intersection, um, that privacy fence that will lead to the, on the backside, we're beginning to along the, that Elk and Legion may create traffic, um, side business issues, but, um, it appears that they have vegetated, um, landscaping along that, those same portions. I'll give another example to the, uh, Shell Blue Place by Papa John's, by Papa John's, dash your oil type of facility. And so I think what I understand is the nature of what they're doing, that they don't do the kind of work that we would probably, or they would do overnight, they're not fixing oil, it's a nature of your moving and the rapid move type of design. So I don't anticipate there being open like cars and things like that, especially.
I, I guess the only other question I have, and, and really is because of the access to Elk Road and the access, that intersection right now, that third lane, it's become a racetrack because what happens is you, somebody that's gets in that lane to go straight across and then they race to get to the red light because of the way the lane is. And you have a lot, we have a lot of issues with people, um, running the red light, but the other issue I see is access to Elk Road. I know when we were developing the other corner across from this, the Walmart, Neighborhood Walmart, they would not allow a driveway at that time onto Elk Road because we could, we tried to convince them that with the gas station being there, that they're such a short, so they put that little driveway at the beginning and they've already had rear ends there because, just the way the intersection is. So that's my only thought, is it being such a small, um, area and then to have the, that intersection is, is, well, you'd have to, you'd have to drive that intersection to see what happens, um, heavy traffic times. But I understand, um, if it's, if it's something that's in and out, that makes it much better than something that would be a...
And also I can raise our compensation, I'm almost certain, I can't speak with DOT, they probably know, uh, if you're right turn out, if you're right turn in, or if you notice there's a median on Elk Road, any person that would make a left turn out.
Right, you'd have to go.
Some of that stuff, DOT, I'm speaking, um, but they, their, 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 uh, spiel is that they're redirecting traffic with the intent to reduce the number of, uh, accidents over there. Um, I don't anticipate whatever the road value is that DOT actually, uh, requires, I don't anticipate that effect of the design of the site, but I do, I'm almost certain they're gonna, uh, have it, do something with, in this, with respect to right turn.
Yeah, 'cause there's, I don't, how many houses are going in right below that? Yeah. Right. Yeah, they did, okay. All right, uh, any, anyone else wants to...
Motion to close, please.
Pub, public hearing closed. And any other questions for Mr. McLaughlin? Okay, we have...
Mayor, I'm making a motion.
Okay.
Uh, in case Z O N dash twenty-one dash zero zero two-three, the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners recommends approval of the rezoning request from R ten Residential District to the CP Plan Commercial District slash CZ Conditional Zoning District. Commissioners find the request is consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, which calls for a heavy commercial at this location. Commissioners further find that recommending approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because CP Plan Commercial District slash CZ Conditional Zoning District would allow commercial uses at an intent, intensity that would be compatible and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning. With respect to the conditions, the Board of Commissioners propose the following conditions to be mutually agreed upon by the applicant. Setbacks, front yard twenty feet, side yard fifteen feet, rear yard fifteen feet, signs, um, is that number one, two, three, and four? So number one, two freestanding signs. Number two, ten-foot setback. Three, seventy-five square feet max each freestanding sign. Number four, two wall signs. Landscape buffers, eight-foot wide buffer.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next item on our agenda is case development zero zero five oh dash twenty-one subdivision waiver from section eighty-six A dash four oh five A three. Sidewalk requirements for non-residential development is proposed along a minor thoroughfare or higher classification street for a parcel point three-nine acres located fifty-six seventeen Rockfish Road, submitted by Crawford Design Company on behalf of Macaulay and McDonald Investments. Turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Okay, uh, this subject property is a zero point three-nine acre block located along Hill Street. Okay, and this is a property that is, the site is pre, was previously operated as a gas station, but was approved by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners, and that is a tire shop on the site, approved process, according to page twenty dash seven five, due to the level of internal improvements. Section eighty-six A dash four oh five A three of the Hope Mills subdivision ordinance triggered the progress for installation sidewalks for non-residential development among both properties and Hill Streets. The site exists through several causes with the proximity of the front of Rockfish, on the side, the front of Hill Street. Property is currently regulated under C one B Plan Local Business District, which is an existing commercial corridor. As it relates to the request, applicant has requested a waiver from the subdivision ordinance, um, following the following sections that are allowed. Um, section eighty-six A dash seven oh one waiver is where the board of commissioners may find, may the requirements of this ordinance where the commissioners find the following, because of the size of the track that's survived or developed, this topography, the condition on major joint areas, or the existence of illegal physical conditions, strict compliance with provision of this ordinance would cause any special hardship to the property owner and be inequitable in the public purpose, purpose of this ordinance and the time of open zoning ordinance would serve to a people of greater degree. Finally, the property owner would not be afforded any special privilege denied to others. As it relates to our staff recommendation, what we ultimately looked at, and I'm looking at this leg, I'm saying, when I first saw the quest, I'm like, there's no way in the world I'm touching this. I'm never standing up here asking for an approval for sidewalks. However, DOT is doing a wide to the Rockfish Road, that by the, uh, actually called for sidewalks to be installed along Rockfish Road. And if you go out to the site, I'll go directly to the site photographs, you look to the right side of the screen, Hill Street is asphalt, the site is asphalt.
Right.
Um, so myself and Don Cisco, other works director, went out to the site and you have, what a sidewalk is, is a hard landscape that provides safe passage along the thoroughfare. You have that hard landscape on Hill Street. So as such, we don't feel that it would be necessary to require sidewalks for this request. And I will take that the only reason why the tire shop, um, they got their groove forward a long time ago, I almost, they, I think they're almost done on the inside, but they couldn't move forward simply because even requesting the Rockfish Road sidewalk, why would they put it in? DOT is, you know, the gang twenty feet, and put sidewalks back in Hill Street. So they, um, by this, uh, there is, uh, this waiver request, and staff is...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your response to my question this evening. I understand what they're wanting to do now, I mean, uh, when I first saw this, I went, whoa, what are we doing? We can't waiver that, we gotta stick to our guns. What do we have to do here to make a motion to approve this?
Got to have a public hearing first.
Okay, have it.
Right?
I'm sorry, have it.
Be nice. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of, of this?
Uh, good morning, or good evening, Mayor, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to talk to you this evening. I'm Dale Crawford, Crawford Design Company, on sixteen, on School Street Street, and I do represent our client, and his, uh, your, uh, planning director had mentioned, uh, first of all, we certainly encourage, uh, walkable community, uh, the land department, that we certainly encourage that. In this case, um, you know, it's, it's a very significant burden when you're installing a sidewalk or, you know, an owner installing a sidewalk only to get it ripped out and then somebody else is gonna reinstall it. Uh, also on Hill Street, uh, there is, like I said, hard surface there, but if you drive Hill Street, you just kind of walk, there's a very severe slope, so we could not, if a sidewalk was put in, it could not even be adiatic. So with those, uh, concerns, we, uh, hope you support the parents. Do you hear to answer any questions?
Can anyone have any questions? No questions. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this, a waiver of sidewalks?
Motion to close, public hearing.
Public hearing closed. Any other questions for Mr. McLaughlin? Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion, please, that we approve case D E V zero zero five zero dash twenty-one, uh, subdivision review. The portion of the subject along Hill Street slopes downhill toward the site, which present a challenge to the proper installation of sidewalks to the existing street. There is an existing hard, hard scrape environment in this area. Staff needs, staff feels that the, that they have also concluded the granting this request would not provide a special privilege to this applicant, that would not be affordable to others.
Okay, have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir, that's it. All righty. Next item on our agenda is public comments, and at this time, we all, uh, recognize Mr. Rod McLean.
I am Rod McLean, fifty-four, thirty-five, back of the lane. Every two years, we elect a new board. Every two years, we send that board for ethical training. Every time we have the ethical training, we come back up with the same problem. Today, you approved having a new partnership with the YMCA, something the people of Hope Mills did not want five years ago or four years ago, and we don't really want it now. We are talking about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars being given to the YMCA and then paid to go and swim. I am a veteran, I'm a disabled veteran. Unfortunately, I'm not disabled because I didn't take a bullet. Therefore, I have no right to have any free access to the YMCA pool, having paid their membership. Thank you very much indeed, board. You're going to have to raise the taxes to pay for this. I would like to see the ethical training on this board brought to Hope Mills, so that the citizens of Hope Mills can see the training that you get. If you can afford five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month to give to the YMCA, you can afford that to bring the training here and have it in an open forum so we can see it, as opposed to your closed forum that you have at some hotel, wherever it is. It is time, it changes. The way this whole thing was managed, with meetings, without forums, legal? Yeah, legal. Ethical? I highly doubt it. And I would like to see one of you have the intestinal fortitude to bring this up to your instructors on ethical training. And I will guarantee to you that probably only one person may try to even do that. The rest of you have been to ethical training and apparently hasn't taken. I'm sorry to say that. I don't expect it to take this time either. Maybe I'm just being negative, but we have seen what has happened before. I sincerely hope that you go to the training, you take the training, and for once in your lives, you take it to heart and you come back and be representative of the town and not representative of yourselves. Thank you.
Mr. McLean, the, it is a announced meeting, a possible quorum. The site location where we will meet will be, um, available. And we also, last year, as well as I can remember, the, two years ago, we actually put it so that we could, we recorded it, so it could be played back, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Star, um, Ms. Starling.
Two years ago, it was, you did it virtually.
Right.
And it was not recorded by us, the state could, could, uh, the, the school government could provide a copy of it, private name.
Right. But we do put a meeting notice, there's potential quorum when we do our, the, the meeting that we have there too.
Yes.
And you can...
You had the meeting on Facebook or somewhere, I agree with that.
Okay.
We were not privy to what you were taught, so that we know what you were taught, so we can understand what the ethics are that you come away with. That is totally secret and unknown to us.
We did have a...
Mayor?
Okay.
Mayor, can, uh, can we, um...
Yeah, we just...
We, we've heard enough. You can pay the money and you can go tend the training. I guarantee you, the school of government will allow you to pay your money and you can go sit in that class with us, and you can see, and then you can report back to whoever you need. And I assure you, sir, there's nothing unethical going on with any member of this board, and your allegations are false, and that's that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. If there anything on the consent agenda that you'd like moved to new business, if not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before you?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Um, we have no old business, we have no new business. Um, the town offices will be closed December twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-seventh, and the thirty-first. Um, question I have been asked is if somebody needs something, because that's three days that the town will be closed, is normal nine-one-one, is that what they... Um, question I have been asked is if somebody needs something because that's three days that the town will be closed, is normal nine-one-one? Is that what they?
So, so this comes in our normal emergency hour numbers to all the operations. We all, you can leave a message, most of our departments, they're emailed.
Okay, 'cause I was asked about if there was something, you know, that was needed to be done, how would we, so if they're checking their.
No, it's changing nine-one-one.
Okay, alrighty.
You know, if you have any kind of operation, usually you usually have people on call and they, public, public, they're usually notified, like, uh, and public, uh, director and others, but there is.
Okay.
They possibly have, you know, police and fire.
Okay.
Or cell phone, you can do the holiday.
Might want to, I, I guess it might be appropriate to, um, put that out somewhere because we did put out that we'll be closed, but not anything as far as if there's something need to be responded to. Okay? Um, any staff comments?
Merry Christmas.
Okay, Merry Christmas. Merry, yeah. And, and thank you for being with us this evening, Katie. We appreciate it.
Oh, it's my pleasure to be here. Thank you for including me.
Yes, alright.
Merry Christmas or happy holidays.
Okay, thank you. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, before we have that motion, to, mayor.
For?
I have the letter from H B C.
You just need to give that to Mr.
They've all got it.
Well, that's all you have to do.
Okay.
Because that, that would, that's.
I didn't get one to Drew.
Okay, well, just the town manager has it. We're good.
I think they all have one now.
Okay, alright, motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Okay.